I call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, October 1st, 2018, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present, others include James Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogen, our city manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2018, and I would entertain a motion.
Still moved?
A motion has been made, is there a second?
No second.
Made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carriers. I fixed it. I think that's the right terminology. The next item is comments by members of the public, and the first is Bruce James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President, Council, Treasurer, Manager. The Newport Fall Foliage Festival, which encompassed two weekends, was very successful. I'm not here to give a full report, just really here to say thank you for your participation, what you contributed to this with your departments and all that you put together. It was a lot of fun. I was told that we had visitors from every New England state, plus New York and eastern Canada, so I think that that accomplished one of the things we all wanted to try and do. There were a lot of smiles on faces, people loved the spirit and the energy in town, and we, the chamber, appreciated the cooperation of the many organizations that worked together to help make this happen, and just wanted to say thank you for that. I will say that the parade, the car parade, we had 20 some odd entries in that. Chief Santos' cruiser was up for best street rod, but seriously, it was a lot of fun, and I think that from my perspective, as far as the street goes, and all the, everything went smoothly, and I took a run through the city today, and it looked like things are in good shape from our perspective.
Is that right?
Could I dovetail on that? I was tickled because the city submitted seven chili competitions, and we had fun, so we had almost every department represented, and I was really tickled that our Public Works Department came in for second overall, and congrats to the person who came in first because they had some tough competition.
They did.
That was great, and same with the third, and also was delighted, Jamie just walked in, that our Fire Department's scarecrow contest, second, I think, overall?
First, best to show.
It was awesome, so I was delighted because it was a great opportunity for the city to showcase themselves a little bit. We had a ball, and I did take some pictures that are, I'm gonna hopefully put them in the annual report to show camaraderie and festivity and fun. And the senior center, their bake sale made over $476. Jim and I were their biggest customers.
We all were.
But that was, the weather was great, we had a lot of fun internally, the community received our presence very well, they thought it was really cool, we had Public Works. I want to say the name of their chili was Roadkill Chili, but I think it was something more dignified.
It was, I agree with you that Roadkill Chili wouldn't have been a fun name, but it was actually Wild Game Chili.
Yeah, so the police had Slumpee the Bear, we had Vermont Maple, Becky's mother had Vermont Maple with bacon. What was?
We were Vermont Wild Chili.
And then you guys were the Fire Department? Firehouse Chili, or also known as Five Alarm Chili?
I just saw it.
Was what?
I just saw it.
Yeah, no, it was a lot of fun, so it was a great opportunity, and I'm glad it appeared to go very well.
Thank you. We did name, put the names of the winners out there, but one thing that we didn't do till today was actually say which recipe it was, because not everybody knows the name. So the Pulled Pork Chili with Beans was the first winner. The second was, of course, the Public Works Department with their chili. We also had a three-way tie with Vermont Maple Bacon Chili, Three Meat Bean Chili, and, golly, the third one escapes me right now, but if you go to the Chamber of Commerce website, it's on. So, but great, so thank you very much, appreciate all the help that you put into this, thank you, and I'll come back at another time for a report if you wish. Thanks, take care, be well.
The next person who signed up for public comment is Susan Lawson.
As some of you may know, I'm the Treasurer of the Mega Community Maritime, otherwise known as the Northern Star. I have been waiting for, to find out what the docking fees would be for the Northern Star. I'm in a bit of a rush because we have people that wish to donate money that are looking for our business plan, and I have to include the budget in the business plan, and I can't complete the budget without knowing what our docking fees would be. So I would hope that we would get that number soon. I heard that they're going to be comparing other places. I hope they're not comparing us with Newport, Rhode Island, or even Burlington for that matter, because we are a small area. And speaking of budgets, I went online today and I saw the report on the centennial that you had put out, however, when I looked at that, it's only basically a general ledger. It's not a financial statement, it gives you batches and reclassifications, and that's all that I'm seeing on there. It's very hard to tell what the final outcome was of the centennial, so I would hope that that could be put in a financial statement form of income and expenses and a balance sheet, so that we, citizens of Newport and other interested people, could see exactly how we came out on that. It's impossible to tell the way it's being presented now. Thank you.
Moving on, the next item is city dock issues. We have Ken Mitro, Ebby, 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 I appear to have asked to be on the agenda to present...
If I might, would it be all right if I said?
Yeah.
We'll feel free to turn the chair up.
Yes.
Thank you. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Johnson, if I might, a bit of background about why I'm coming forward is, things haven't been happy down at the dock, and I've tried a number of different ways to get some answers and some resolution, but I haven't met with much success. As a bit of background, if I may, just to give you a little bit of an idea where I'm coming from with all of this, I had a boat before I had a bicycle, grew up underwater, was involved in the marine industry, both at recreational and, I started working at a boatyard when I was a kid, ended up running the boatyard, worked at a national level for manufacturers, worked back at dealer level as sales managers, I was involved in international ships and shipping globally, spent an enormous amount of time traveling, involved in the marine industry in that way. I've done an awful lot of, attended many, many, many sales seminars, training seminars, have conducted many of the same customer relations management seminars and things of this nature, both domestically and internationally. That's just a little bit of where it's at. The reason why I decided to come to the council was, there's several areas that were of concern. There were the issues of leases and how they are presented and how they compare with the city ordinance, which is the control and document, safety at the dock, and the customer relations and customer service issues. Where this started was, customers were unhappy, I received a number of letters and emails about their experiences, positive and negative, but the instigator, so to speak, was the leases. In 2018, for that year or this year, we were presented leases that contained terms, one of which was that we could be terminated without cause by the city. That term and others are not in the city ordinance. When I asked about that in the fall, I was told that if I didn't sign the lease, I would lose my opportunity for slips, so I really didn't have much choice. When we received our registration certificates of registration in the spring, there was a whole new list of rules and regulations and terms and penalties attached that were not in the leases that we signed, so these were changes after the fact. I threw a number of different conversations, communications with the harbor master, with Parks and Recreation, with city manager, ultimately, we had a meeting in early, right after the centennial celebration, to discuss all of these different things. During that meeting, I'd asked for, where does the authority to change the leases come from, if they're not being changed in a manner prescribed in the ordinance, and I never received an answer. Since that time, we've been various different communications, I've asked that question repeatedly in a number of different ways, and I've never received an answer. Before I came here, I reached out to Mr. Johnson as in his role on the Harbor Commission, and asked if I should be bringing these questions to the Harbor Commission, and I was told no, I should bring these to the council as these are matters, I should bring these to the council. I prepared a summary, which I sent to you before, which compared the terms of the leases with the city ordinance. The piece that pushed me to coming now was, the 2019 leases contain yet again more changes that again don't coincide with the ordinance. I asked questions about why these, what authority of these changes being made, I have not received any comments. If you wish I can go through in detail what these various changes are, or what these various different clauses are as it relates to the document, but in summary, the control of the waterfront or the control of the lake within the city limits was responsibility, I'm trying to remember the precise wording, the city has delegated responsibility, the State Water Natural Resources Board has delegated responsibility to the city. In their rules to the city of how this is to happen, they state that there has to be a controlling ordinance that contains specific pieces of information, one of which is the rules and regulations, secondly, that there has to be a Harbor Commission, third, that any changes to rules and regulations have to be proposed by the Harbor Commission to the city council, and then they have to be adopted in the prescribed manner. It also states in there that the state needs to be notified 45 days in advance before the council can vote, or votes to accept or whatnot, before the wait period happens. It also very specifically says in there that any rules and regulations involved in managing that or applying that have to be presented and adopted in the exact same manner as paid and ordinance, and these things aren't being done, pure and simple. I have to presume they're not being done because my answers have, no questions have been answered regarding that, and no documentation has been provided to substantiate it. If you wish, I can give you more of the information, but you have all of it there, I don't want to bore you with what I sent you. We have other issues in regards to safety. The dock, point blank, the dock has been in very poor repair for a long period of Not much money has been put back into the repair or the maintenance of it historically. Last fall, I myself and others brought up safety issues. We were told that a lot of things were going to be changing for this year, improvements are going to be made, there was a letter that came out mid-winter to that effect, but a lot of things promised, some of which we thought were rather optimistic, but there were some very specific promises made. This spring, nothing, none of that had taken place, and at the beginning of the season, on the day of launch, when the boats were put in, the large boats were put in by crane, one of the crane crew fell through the dock, was electrocored. That dock had been fixed after that fact, of course, but other docks were in really sad shape. The old ones up against the Gateway Center, the gangways going down onto the floats are in very poor shape, they're rotted, they're falling apart, they're held together with sheet rock screws, they bounce, and bottom line, they're dangerous. And from the very beginning, I had asked, and other customers were asking, that these issues be addressed. I was promised next week at launch date. I also brought up questions about the corners of floats have sharp metal edges, and I was requesting that, that could damage people's property. I was asking that those would be addressed. I was told that I could make any repairs that I wanted to, and I said, well, it's the city property, I'm leasing a space from the city that I expect to be in reasonable condition, that doesn't jeopardize the safety of my boat, or my safety while approaching it. If I operate in negligent manner, that's a different issue, but that stance really kind of rubbed against me. At other points during the year, there've been disconcerting comments that repairs would rather not be made because it might change the opportunity or possibility of getting things replaced if they're in better condition. Bottom line was, things were going on, things were not happening, there were customer relations issues mixed in. When nothing was happening, that's when I came to the city, I had a meeting, presented these issues in writing, was told that these things would be addressed, nothing happened. In August, nothing was happening, so I sent an email, and things immediately happened. My gangway was fixed the next day, and I'm grateful for that, I thank people for that, and I sent out a message thanking people for that. But things quickly stalled out. I was requested to come before the council, I'd approached the mayor and asked to come before the council, and coincidentally, the next business day, I was approached and sought out, and I pointed out issues, and we went over situations on the dock, and things started to change, so I withdrew my request, but they petered out within a week. So, there's been other communication about leases, no questions have been answered, nothing was happening, so, and then the new leases for 2019 come out, and again, nothing has changed in terms of how they've been implemented, no questions have been asked, so that's why I requested to come before the council. Now, surprisingly, in the last few days, a lot, there's been a flurry of activity of repairing gangways and such on the dock, but I brought up other safety issues that just simply weren't addressed. Other concerns we had were, the city had became involved in weed remediation, there was a grant put forward to fund this, an outfit was contracted to come in and raid within a very specified area last year, there was a map outlining it. It included, we had slip holes, we advised in advance to move our boats, facilitate cleaning underneath them, people arranged, because they had enough notice and time off to come in with boats and things of this nature, and work was done. This year, we received an email after the project was underway that it was happening. I replied, asking, do we need to move the boats, not, didn't get any response. I came up to the dock, asked a question of the crew, was told that there was no need to move, and it had been decided it wasn't necessary to raid onto the boats. When they concluded, there were weeds are surfacing, they're all around the boats, I'm saying weeds that hadn't been raped, not stuff that had been dislodged. They're underneath the boats, they're in the, larger areas were missed, and it was just kind of like, so what? I asked if the lease, if the document or the contract was the same as last year, because if there was, the city paid for services that weren't informed. I never got much of an answer to it. A while later, an email came out stating how wonderful the program is working, because few weeds were harvested this year. It's ongoing things of this. Customer relations issues are, I'm trying to, it, customer service, there's two very different levels of customer service. We, as slip holders and mooring holders, have contracted for services that we don't feel are being provided, one of which is, we are told that, it states that we'll be given assistance coming into our slips. A number of the boats are sailboats, and they can need help, because they don't maneuver as well as a powerboat, but this has not been happening, it's been very rare that the kids come down. The harbor master's come down and helped me a number of times, and I thank him for that, but in general, it's been ignored. There've been circumstances where some people have been vocal about it, and they get less treatment. We have situations where transient boats are put in place and blocking people on their slips. When asked about it, we're told, well, they slip in while we're busy, we don't have a chance to deal with all of them, but they're not moved. We, we had an incident last fall. Historically, what's happened, it used to be that the Coast Guard maintained the buoys and the marks on the lakes, navigation, marking of rocks, sandbars, things of this nature. The Coast Guard gave authority or turned over management of those two members of the yacht club, so it was now being done privately, and to help with this, the city had been making the harbor master's boat available with an employee to run it, and take these in and out each year. The buoys are maintained by private citizens, placed on coordinates dictated by the Coast Guard. Last fall, when it came about, there was a refusal to make the boat available, and it only became so after there was direction to make this happen. This spring, when it came time to put them back out, again, there was a refusal, and again, there was a direction to make this happen. The individual who's been involved with this for many years was not allowed on the boat. I've cited a number of issues and circumstances in my notes to you, but I've given you letters and documentation, excuse me, backup of that, from customers, this is my words, it's customers' words. I've been told in the past that the issues are fine, except for a few problem customers making things difficult. I've been told that people need to change their perceptions. I've been told that these are personal attacks on the dock employees. These aren't personal attacks, there's nothing, I, people involved are, I have nothing, they're fine people. This is about professional conduct, this is about the way that the public is treated, this is about customer service. Every year, the rates at the dock go up, whether it be cost of living, or every year the council approves rate increases, but every year, there are empty slips, there are empty moorings, yet there aren't at the east side. At the east side, the facilities are in better condition, and you pay, I could put my boat over there for about $400 to $500 less money than it costs to afford to be here. I would rather be here because of the conditions of the city dock, and the building, give me better weather protection, it's easier to get in and out. But I don't have, over there, I've had notes, letters from people stating that they don't have problems with people fishing next to the boats, they don't have problems with fish hooks caught in their lines, which is a safety issue, you go and handle your line, there's a fish hook in it, they don't have problems with this going on, they don't have problems with, because it's a public dock, we get all nature of public people on the dock, so there's a difference in terms of the people who are wandering around on the docks. The people over there on Sunday morning, weekend mornings, they bring out coffee to the members of the dock, they get a 10% discount at the restaurant, they have clean bathrooms, multiple. Here, we have one. If you go down there now, there's a sign on one that says for customers, and another one for transients. It's just a whole combination of things like this. During the summer, the city helps sit in an office with windows closed, or curtains drawn, and they can't see the dock. These finally, after a lot of complaining, were removed in August. The tour boat, which has been birthed at the outside edge of the dock, had been hanging out into the navigable channel. The bow of the boat, and then the bow spread itself, not only was that a danger at night, but it was also blocking the navigation light. I asked why can't this be moved, and I was told that's the way it's always been, we can't get hold of the guy.
It was moved.
In August.
Let him finish, yes, I, we, yes.
That was moved in August, not, I brought this up at the meeting in July, I brought it up verbally, I've got my notes substantiated, it was moved a few feet in August, so that now it's not hanging out into the, into the navigable way, into the channel. But it took a lot of complaining and a lot of grumping and a lot of groaning to get there. These are the types of things that happen. We're looking for some relief. Most specifically, what I'm looking for is, we have now, a lease that's been presented to us, that contains terms not in the ordinance, and we're told that we have to sign this and give our deposit for the coming season by October 9th, and if we don't, we lose, we lose our spot. What I'm looking for is, the ordinance says that we don't have to, the renewals go out in January, and the payment's not due until the end of February, and it's on March 1st that the, you lose your possession or you lose your slip, or your mooring. I'm not arguing that some of the change, some of the items in the leases don't make sense, I'm arguing that they're not done legally in a manner that they should be. And what I'm asking is that we have relief from signing these new leases until a legal lease is presented. I detailed to you in the information that I gave you that the ordinance, it conflicts itself. I cited the two particular chapters. One says that renewals are sent out in January, with payment due by the end of February, another says that, further in that same section, it says that we're not guaranteed a returning spot, and that we have to reapply for consideration for the coming year. And my question's, which is, there needs to be clarification of that. There are a number of other terms, if you like, I go into them, otherwise, if you have questions, I can go further into this. I have, in terms of have things changed, no, they haven't. I've got a letter I received this afternoon from a dock customer who was, who details her experience just two days ago. I emailed you all that, a copy of that this afternoon, I have a copy I can present to you here, but things haven't changed, they don't give any indication of changing, I would like some help with that.
Council members, some questions for this meeting?
Here, I mentioned that the Coast Guard marks are places of buoys, marks of sandbars, and there was something else, but they, this year, they had given it to the city?
No, no, as years passed, the Coast Guard turned over, turned that function of placement and maintenance of the materials to private citizens, or the members of the yacht club. These people, under, with approval of the Coast Guard, would continue to maintain and place those buoys, there's some 20 odd, if I remember correctly, all toward the around the USI of the lake, and that what had been is a partnership between the city and the boat owners of maintaining this.
Do you know when they, the city took over that?
I don't have that.
The city, the city does not maintain the buoys, the yacht club maintains the buoys.
Private citizens, I mean.
Private, and the yacht club has paid for the upkeep of the buoys. Basically, in years past, years ago, the harbor master at that time would help, and then a private boat owner kind of took it over, they put them out, until the year...
That's for five years.
What?
That's for about five years.
Five years.
But the club also bought and maintained the marks, and as soon as they were put into the water, the Coast Guard takes over responsibility for that. We had, I was the keeper of the mark for, that wasn't allowed on the boat.
Basically, until last fall, they were, a gentleman was helping out, until he couldn't do it anymore, he took care of it and passed away, and so he, you know, and so that's where they requested. He took care of it and passed away. And so he, you know, and so that's where they requested.
Our boats, most of our boats are sailboats. We can't put the marks there because we can't get to them. So we need a boat that we can put stuff in and take it out there. It's only for three hours. That's all we're asking.
To me, it's a good public-private partnership. You've got a private entity that's actually paying the tens of thousands when it comes time to hiding slighted buoys, you know, to put them out.
When these buoys are entertained in the water, there's, I think it's called the tea table on the Canadian side. A sailboat hit that this summer. It's not marked because the Canadians don't mark it. The boat sank and there were six people on board. Had made it to Providence Island and had to get in as close to shore as possible and it sank. We put the marks out so the hazards on the American side are fully marked and you can, you know where, where to stay away from. Without them, there's going to be a lot of courage.
And the marks are actually on the Coast Guard map. Because I know the navigation map of the lake, several years ago, they had called me and wanted to know if the marks were still being put out because they were updating their map. And I said, yes, they are, because they actually mark it on their map as far as the marks go.
In my, in the cartography, in my GPS on my boat, I have the current location, locations matched cartography, which is current. That information comes on the charts from my boat and the Coast Guard. But you're looking at rocks, you're looking at shoals, you're looking at things that are just under the water. They're aids in safety. And I understand that if the city was responsible for placing those or maintaining them, that would be a different liability issue if this, if the city maintaining them.
And when it comes to the weeds, the weeds, the boats really, in reality, should have been moved. Because you get down there and it looks like it's worse than ever. And I know one person literally got stuck backing out of their slip. And they were informed that it wasn't the city's issue.
I was there when that conversation took place.
Because I was contacted by the individual and they were informed that it wasn't the city's job to rake weeds. I mean, the ones that are floating around. And so...
What happens is with a sailboat, you've got a rudder sticking off the back of the boat and you have either a small outboard or a small inboard with a small propeller. And they become followed in the weeds trying to get out. So they don't have maneuverability with their propellers found and their rudder can be impinged. In my boat, when I come out of my slip, I'm a powerboat, I come out, once I clear the dock, I reverse and clear my propellers of the weeds. And I always watch and you can see a clump of them coming up. It's, but they block your water inlets and you block your intakes. It causes functionality problems. But it causes navigation difficulties within the mooring fields or rather within the dock confines and the slips itself.
Another thing that I was actually contacted about was the subleasing of your dock slip if you're gone for a period of time or a mooring. So the person contacting me said, well, if I have a mooring and I'm gone for a month, the city has a right to sublease it. So what happens liability-wise, if that boat is too big for the mooring or breaks loose? That was a concern that the individual contacted me on, is who's liable? Because if the city has subleased that mooring while I'm gone for, say, a weekend and the boat breaks loose, who's liable? And that's the concern that this individual, people, people at the dock have. People pay for a space and suppose your dock slip is used and the city has subleased it, say, for a weekend, thinking that you're going to be gone for the weekend, but you come back early. What happens in that case? And the people have already paid for that space for the season, yet the city has it written that they can sublease it.
If I may, in last year's lease, the 2018 lease, the amendments and clauses that were stuck on after our signature in the spring say that we had to have a boat in place by a particular date. If we didn't have a boat in place by a particular date, we were forfeit, even if you paid for it. If you were out of your slip for three or more days with the slipholders' permission, the city could stick a transient boat in there. If you were not in your slip for 45 days without permission, it was considered abandoned. The ordinance states that you rented that slip for a year. If you rented a mooring, you have to have a boat on that mooring within the year or you have to have a boat in the slip at some point during the year, the permitted boat, in all fairness. People thought that was rather onerous. I can't understand why. And so this year, the lease was changed. It simply, all that language was removed. Now it says that the city has the right with a temporary vacancy of the slip or the mooring to use it. The mooring, a person who has a mooring permit, they have rented a piece of the lake bottom with a radius around it on the surface. And they take, they, they make a, or install a mooring on the coordinates prescribed by the Harbor Master to the regulate, to the regulations and the details prescribed in the city ordinance. That's their private property. The city's saying, with this lease, with no definition of what temporary vacancy is, temporarily gone, that we can go and commandeer your private property for our benefit. We can put somebody on that as a transient and collect money for it. I think that's wrong.
Any questions from council members?
No, from Mr. Reeb.
Okay. Do you have questions for anyone?
There are other people here who are attending who are slip and mooring holders, some of which are people who have written letters that I presented to you both this spring. I forwarded one to you today as well. The author is here.
So just to clarify, so your main ask is to delay the October 9th deadline?
My main, my main ask is immediately to delay the October 9th deadline and...
And resolve all the other issues.
Resolve all these other issues. Because none of the, all of these issues that I'm asking and I addressed in the leases, if we sign the lease, where does that leave us? And separately, we would like some relief. We would like to have the customer service and customer relations issues addressed. Some of them have been quite concerning. If there's anything else or not, then thank you.
Anyone have anything?
Well, like I said, I do have questions, but they're not specific to Mr. Reeb. It's...
So you want me to ask them now or? Are they for the staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I would assume it would be the staff would be answering these.
If you want to, you can ask for now and then if we have other questions.
Question or any comments if I, if I speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have the floor.
Yes, you have the floor. I guess for Jessica, who has been doing the repairs on the dock and the gangways of late?
Uh, our staff.
And how often is the dock's safety checked and by whom?
So the dock safety is, to my recollection, of course, knowing that I stepped in the director position in March when people were here. We didn't have safety checks of the dock, basically, at all. In fact, this is the first year our insurance carrier knew of our facility, really, and we invited him down there to do a walkover, see to check because that hasn't been done before.
That's the insurance representative?
Yes, our insurance, our risk management division of our insurance.
And they are, I don't want to use the word licensed, but they're, they're well versed enough to take care of that? Is it a specific insurance that would deal with maritime issues?
Uh, so they, we are actually, they're only municipality, this BLCT, we're all legal city council. Burlington, of course, being the only other municipality that has a legal, and they have their own insurance carrier. So they do their own thing. So BLCT came over there, could we ask for all of our facility and risk management? They handle all of that and we have safety meetings on a quarterly basis where Jim Carrion, who's the representative, comes over and visits us. We get facility walks all the time. So if this is what he does, and so he did his research, of course, before he came here and just has an eye for those things. A lot of the marine stuff is, you know, whether or not it's next to water or not, it's almost at an elevated level relative to other facilities. So there's a lot of similar eye information there. So he did come down and do a walkthrough with us. But we've never, until now, had that done before.
A few years ago, I believe the council okayed getting some sort of weed abatement process put in place. I don't know if it was raking the weeds or putting down mats, but was that ever done or what is your process right now?
From what I've seen from previous, in my, I stepped into the boat and was looking back to see what I had done. It sounded like there were some mats and a few different proposals put forth by Andy. The city council decided that the hydroraking project was the best fit. That's a very limited zone permitted by the state with a lot of permitting stipulations around it. Where we can do it, when we can do it, how we can do it. This, the second year that we have done this hydroraking project, last year was the first year. They took out a substantial amount of weeds last year. We didn't have, we had some boats moved last year, but not many. This year, with the busyness of the season and the centennial, it could sneak up on us, absolutely. So we got a call from Solitude Lake Management, who's the contractor that we use, and said, hey, we'll be up there tomorrow. And we're like, oh no, we're left scrambling. So that, in that situation, we dropped the ball and we didn't leave the boaters. This was our plan to leave them away. We spoke with Solitude Lake Management and they said, you know what, because of the shadows that the boats cast, there's really not a lot of weeds in and around the slips. And even the boats that were moved last year, we didn't pull much out of those slips. So it's probably not really a big deal to move those boats. Ideally, would we like to have those boats out of the way? Absolutely. Do we plan on doing that next year? Absolutely. In fact, we've already reached out to them and tried to find out what the date is that they'll be coming. We want to move it a little bit later in the season where the weeds are higher and we get more and be bang for our buck. And we'd like to let our, we wanted to include it in the voter agreement when that date was, but the best we can do is pick them on at this point. So when they came in, they initially did the hydroraking project. I, of course, was not in my role last time. I did see it happen. It was pretty cool. They could bring out big scoops of weeds. Did the same process as they did that was effective for us the year before. And then this year, they said, yeah, we did, you know, we did the same thing, got less weeds. So that must be, must be it's working. So I was like, great. Sent out an email to the boater and said, good news, they took out less weeds. Those weeds are, those darn weeds are not coming back. A couple, a month or so later, the weeds were back and in full force. And there were areas that we discovered that looked like Solitude had missed. The project did get completed sooner than it did last year, a shorter time period. And they said, we're already done. So for us, it was like, great. But it sounds like there's some areas that were missed. So we had already been in contact with Solitude Lake Management and said, these are the issues that we had with the work this year. We also feel like that some of the work that they did did not quite meet the permit requirements that we had issued to us by the state. So that was a concern of ours. We decided that we would give them one more year to correct themselves next year with us also being on our game and getting the boats out of there for them. And if it, if we didn't see effectiveness last year, then we look for a different method. Our Harbor Master also contacted, just for some feedbacking to kind of get an understanding of a diver that does weed pulling manually, which would certainly be a different style project, but hopefully just as effective. So we're taking that information into account too.
Is there anyone from the city that kind of supervises or assists Solitude Lake Management when they're operating this?
No, they're a contractor. So you try and specifically to do this job. They do this in, they do this type of thing all over the place.
So they're basically on their own and they come up here?
Yep, yep. We're there. Our public works director helps us this year with, we have to provide a trailer to haul the weeds away. So they're there and, but for the most part, you trust, just as any contractor, they know what they're doing and all of itself. We did, I know personally, I went down there as the project was being completed in the following days and did notice that there was a lot of weeds on the surface and a lot of them are residual floating up. I personally asked our seasonal staff to make sure that they're doing their best to scoop it out. We talked about methods for letting them dry on the dock and then hauling them away when they're a little bit, you know, less heavy. But they just, there were so many of them. And unfortunately, with the dry summer that we had, the lower water levels and the extra suns and weeds were crazy this year. I'm not sure I would necessarily agree that they're the worst that they've ever been, only because this is only the second year that we've been doing the hydroraking project, but they were pretty darn bad this year. So we're, we're working to mitigate that and that's been a problem since the inception of the dock. It's a problem over at Friday Beach. It's a problem for our mooring folks who are not even in that permitted area to hydrorake. So there's nothing even we can do for them unless the city wants to spend some more money and make that happen. But this might be pretty hard to take care of.
Did, did, I just clicked in. Did we get a refund at all for anything this year because it wasn't up to par? I would hope that we'd get some sort of discount or refund because I know a year ago, they did move every boat because I had a boat down there, a year ago. When they first came, they moved every boat. We had to move them all from over here to over here. We moved all these boats.
The Harbor Master was moving them? Like, back then, they're moving them or?
Um, they had the owners down there, but they also, I think the Harbor Master at the time did call the boat owner and say, can I hook on and move your boat?
We were told two weeks in advance when it was gonna happen.
Yeah, I said, I believe that I telegraphed that email as well.
But, and so I would hope that we get some sort of refund if it didn't meet up to par because any contractor who doesn't meet specifications should give some sort of refund. Because if you've had whole areas that were missed.
Really couldn't tell the difference.
If I may, there are two employees from last year here in the room who were involved in that project. They could best speak to how it was managed last year, if you choose to ask them.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the past employees because they all oversaw it last year.
Yeah, we, we moved the boats.
We moved every boat down there?
Every boat.
Mosby has pictures of it.
Yeah, I've got pictures. Everybody wants to look at them. But every boat was moved. There was quite a bit of heads up notice that went out, like Jim mentioned, two weeks. It was quite well coordinated at the city dock itself.
They had a, they put the same booms out this year to catch the weeds as they floated away. Did they do that this year, those yellow booms?
They were, they were. They did, they were out there and they, they got taken out earlier, I believe, because the contractor didn't come prepared with lights on them. In fact, the day that I was down there, I was going up to pick and shovel and see if he could find long lights to put on them. That was another issue that I addressed with them in my correspondence. Because our permit requires that they stay in there until the sediment sets. And we weren't necessarily convinced that the sediment had set by the time they pulled those barriers out.
Oh, no. Finish, I'll let you finish.
They were actually, the day of the press release, we were all out on the dock. Remember where the podium was out there? They were sitting in the background there.
Right.
They did put them out.
I still say we got to get a refund on some of them.
The floating booms that were collecting stuff that was just floating around. The one on the end of the dock opposite the launch ramp was there for what, a month, month and a half afterwards last year?
Yeah, yeah. Well, a couple of weeks. And also the weeds that kept were left, the residual weeds. The dock staff raked them up, hauled them off and got them out of there. They weren't left to float around. Or tell them, the slipholders, oh, that's your responsibility. It's never happened in the past.
So the slipholders were never told that it was their responsibility to pick out the weeds and move them? What was, what is included in the voter agreement is that this, it's not up to the city, that the weeds are a challenge that the city has every year. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot we can do about that. We do make these initiatives to make sure that, A, we're reducing the growth of them by spreading awareness about the invasive species and all of that. We do have the hydroraking project. We do do hand pulling and things like that. But, but we can't take on the liability of those weeds. It's just not something the city can say, yes, that's our problem. Those are natural occurrences and we do our best to mitigate it, but sometimes they're just a challenge and they happen forever at the dock and over at Friday Beach, you know.
The, we're not saying that the city owns the li, as leasehold customers, we're not saying the city owns the liability. What we're saying is that when we ask for help, we're denied it. When we are asked, the city contracted to have work done, excuse me, done this year. When we are asked, the city contracted to have work done, excuse me, done this year, it was poorly done, wasn't done to what the scope was last year, I don't know what it was this year, because we haven't been seeing it. When the weeds that we said, stated were surfacing, they were right at the surface the day they were doing the raking. They didn't appear afterwards, they didn't grow in afterwards, they were all visible at the time. Waiting a month later, the weed problem gets worse until they get raked out. So, it doesn't help the navigation if you wait three weeks or four weeks. But when, I was in earshot last, a week ago, when a slip holder asked about the weeds and for assistance, and was told it's not our responsibility. The weed hold, the slip holder raked leaves out herself, placed them on the float next to her boat, and a week later asked, you know, would you remove those? No, they're not our responsibility.
Is there a waiting list for slips or moorings?
Uh, no, our mooring field is maybe a third hole for A and C. We haven't had a waiting list for many years for that. In our dock, when we, when we started looking at dock operations, when I stepped into the role and with our new harbor master, we, there was a waiting list that was pretty long, but it was ancient, and the contact information, we tried our best to go down and sift through, to give these folks, of course, seniority on a waiting list that we were to hopefully clean up. We had a really hard time getting in touch with people and anyone we did contact said, no, no, thank you. But we did have every, was every slip filled this year?
Yes, I'm now building a waiting list. I've got five, somewhere between five and 10 people on that list.
So, our slips were filled for this summer, but there was no one on the waiting list, because we had cleansed out and cleared that whole one. We do now have folks that are waiting in the wings for slips for next year, maybe three or four that are waiting for next year. We're just working...
Or a few more than that.
Or more. We're working on the basis of how are we gonna handle that waiting list, are we gonna require people to have a deposit with us, so that when a slip does open up, we're all set, we can just slide them right in there, or do we wanna wait? One of the challenges was that someone would get on the waiting list, and then we wouldn't have an opening for a while, and we'd never be able to get back in touch with them and say, do you still wanna be on the waiting list? So, we didn't wanna give away their spot on the waitlist in case they would come back, but the record keeping was really poor. So, we did what we could do and then kind of started fresh. So, this year, we were full, we didn't have a waiting list. Going into next year, we do have a few folks that are ready to take a slip when given the opportunity.
I was gonna say, historically, there hasn't been a waiting list, an active waiting list. At the beginning of the season, there were empty slips. Two weeks before we, the slips went in, I was told there were empty slips. Last winter, last fall, I was told we had this enormous and growing waiting list.
We thought we did, until we went through and called them all and found out that...
Yeah, the waiting list had over 20 people. I called them all myself.
So, basically, last winter, you just called out that?
Which is, which is great.
When, when, when I stepped into this role, there was a lot of work to be done, both at the facility maintenance level and at the operations level, the record keeping was really poor down there. Our, it was, it was, it was peace, it was few and far between, and as a result of that, the city had some lost revenue. We were not collecting fees on time, and it was a big challenge for us to do operations and smooth in a good way, in an effective way. So, the voter agreement that you've seen, and actually by request from Dan, we did include the documentation that voters were receiving prior to us kind of revamping the voter agreement. You can see that there are just one-page things that have the fee, very little, there's no rules or regulations in there, it was really nothing, similar to the same thing that we went through over at Gardner Park, where there was no reservation process, there was no fees, people weren't paying or even registering to use the fields. So, we kind of had to go through a pretty big overhaul of operations down there. We did, we put together the voter agreement using our best practices, research from around, input from our insurance carrier, and kind of put together the best that we thought would fit for our dock. We put that out there to voters, it was a huge change from what, with all due respect, they, it certainly was a huge change, but kind of all happened in one year, but we really needed to do that in order to run things smoothly from an operational standpoint. So, it probably was a little bit shocking, you know, last year. This year, the voter agreement looks very similar to it, to what it looked like last year, and there's some additions in there as we continue to grow, and that's a normal thing when we are developing our facilities, at all of our facilities, you know, we go, we put, we put rules out one summer, and then somebody launches off fireworks in the campground, and we think, oh, we need to add in a rule that says there's no fireworks allowed in the campground. So, these are, this is a natural evolution of things. We have done our best to try to reiterate with folks that the doors open, if you have suggestions or feedback, please let us know, we'll take it under advisement, things that we can help out with, we will. And then there are some things that the city, from a business perspective or from a liability perspective, we need to, we need to have in there.
Whoa, I'm sorry, I was just reading, I was looking at the application for next year, sorry.
It brings me back to my question that I've been asking and re-asking. The city ordinance and the state rules state that all rules and regulations affecting this are in the ordinance and have to be changed in the same manner as the ordinance, and my question has been repeatedly, where is the authority to make the changes that are being made, that are being made? Where is the public oversight of this? And who, where is the oversight, where's the public feedback?
So, I just want to clarify for council, because this is, was something that I had to grab a little too, the ordinance is for the moorings only. There is no governing document for the slips, for the dock, which is where most of our customers are, and which most of this voter agreement is pertaining to. Most of the things in the mooring section are for mooring holders, and they come directly from the ordinance. There are a few suggestions in there for this year, there's a new one about winterization of tackle, I've gotten some feedback that voters are saying, oh, it's required, and I said, no, no, it just says in there that you should do that, and that's really for the voters. The ICE moves the tackle, and then the voters in the spring end up having to foot the bill to put the tackle back on station, which is clarified in the mooring ordinance that that's the responsibility of the voter who owns the tackle. So, that's kind of more of a precautionary in the interest of the voter, they can winterize whether or not they choose to. But as far as the, the slips on the city dock, we don't have a governing document for that, so we polled from different directions, spoke to the yacht club, got some feedback from the harbor permission, and did our best to kind of put together what made sense. A lot of it mirrors the ordinance, because it's just for simplicity's sake, that's what is easiest, the fees and the deadlines and things all mirror the ordinance, just because it's easier for us to collect all of our dock fees on the same dates as opposed to having something different for moorings versus slips. So, a lot of the concerns that are being addressed by our slip holders, there is no governing document for that.
Which brings me to this question, when was ordinance 114 last amended and approved by the city council? Was that back on September 19, 2005? Does anyone know?
2001, when I looked in the mooring, when I looked in the ordinance book, that was the most recent one.
I provided you all the copy.
Right. So, has that ordinance been amended at all since that date?
Not, not to my knowledge, no. And we do think that there are things that could be changed in the ordinance, but before bringing those things to council, we wanted to basically learn ourselves to figure out what needs to be changed and then bring those changes, but we haven't implemented anything that we don't think is covered in the ordinance.
Actually, they gotta go to the harbor commission's place?
Yes, they do, and...
Per the ordinance and the A and R, or whatever the state is, they gotta go to the harbor commission, who then says yea and a to it, and then it comes to the council.
That's per the state, state law requirement, state requirements.
I think that's an important topic, too, because I feel like our process would have really benefited from an active harbor commission. The harbor commission hasn't met since we were talking, we were going through harbor master interviews, and they don't meet regularly. In fact, I don't even have, I don't even have phone, I don't even have contact information for most of them. But I really think that I'd love to have a voice with the harbor commission.
It's on the website.
We do contact regularly Heidi with the yacht club, and I ask her about her and all these all the time, because I feel like she is a good agent for me.
But the harbor commission...
Harbor...
Go ahead, you know.
The harbor commission only meets to settle controversies.
Yes.
They don't set policy, they interview the harbor applicants for the harbor master and recommend to the council on what they find, but the harbor mission, commission is not there to set policy there. Harbor ordinance number 116 lays that out, what rules are to follow and what aren't. We had a dispute this summer, this spring earlier, because of Canada, about a mooring thing, in that with the harbor commission, the harbor commission resolved it. That's, we don't meet regularly, we're not supposed to meet regularly. Only when there's a discrepancy or a complaint, or you're hired a new harbor master.
I think also changing the ordinance, right?
Well, if you change the ordinance, then they're gonna meet.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
If you can't change the ordinance, well, harbor master given tools.
The harbor commission.
The commission. You can't make any changes to the ordinance, but the harbor commission agreeing to it.
A question, if I may, I'm confused then, I mean, you know more, certainly more than I, but in the ordinance, it says that the, when it defines what the harbor commission does, it states that the harbor commission reviews, reviews proposed, makes, reviews and makes proposals to the city council for changes to rules and regulations.
Well, until they propose to change, we'll review it.
So, I, then, my interpretation was that changes, let's say, to the ordinance or the rules, had to first be submitted to the council, to then be submitted to the, I'm sorry, commission, to then be submitted to the council.
If somebody wants to make a change to the ordinance, they gotta send it to the harbor commission, and we'll review it.
For moorings, right?
For moorings. There's two different things here, there's a dock, and section, ordinance, and there's a mooring ordinance. They're not the same thing.
All right, and then why is the ordinance referenced heavily in the slip agreements?
In the slip...
I'm just, I'm, I'm happy to be looking at you, Jim, I didn't mean to ask you specifically the question.
There, and this thing is supposed to be a dock master and a harbor master.
Okay.
But because of what we have here, one person does them both. It's two different ordinances, you've got one for the dock, and one for the mooring field.
So, the voter agreement does reference ordinance 116 and 114, because those are relevant to the dock and dock area. In the voter agreement, it says that not only are voters accountable to this agreement, they're also accountable to these ordinances. That saves us having to put verbatim the ordinance into the voter agreement, it basically says, not only are you, you need to uphold this, but you should lay your eyes on those two ordinances, too, because that's where we get all of this stuff.
And a question I have, because I've been asking this question all for months, why am I getting the answer now?
Good question. If you have...
Just one more, and then you have the other one.
No, they'll take you to ask whatever you want, this is why we're here.
Were some of them delays in fixing parts of the dock or slips, was that due to lack of funds in your department until?
July 1.
July 1?
Yeah, so, as you remember, the city council allocated $25,000 in capital projects for dock improvements, specifically for safety improvements. Those funds were not freed up until July 1. Of course, getting contractors in on July 1 to perform work is really challenging. As we all know, our harbor master had an injury early season, which prevented us from doing a lot of that work in season. We, one of the factors that also affected this is the, our seasonal staff, we had a change over this year, too, and we had a lot of marine students down there that did not have a lot of boating experience, and that was just the application pool that we received. We chose kind of our best picks from them, but there was certainly no one down there with expertise on, in those areas. So, it was a little bit of a perfect storm, some of the things that we wanted to accomplish this year just didn't happen. So, but we will, we have plans going forward to make some more things happen, and that facility has been asleep for quite some time, and these docks have been aging for a lot longer than the last two years or year. It's taken a lot of time for them to get in the condition that they're in.
Oh, anything?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Just a final question or comment, is that slip holders have done the math for a long time, and they look at that, a city collects approximately $30,000 a year from slips, but historically, there hasn't been really anything put back into repair of the facilities. And I understand that there were, yes, there was no budget coming into July prior to that for repairs, but the question and the comment that I kept making was, there are liability issues of, and dangerous issues with the public safety that existed before July 1st. Why did it take until the middle of August and late August to start repairs? There's a, there is, the public's at risk, it puts the city in an enormous liability, and to say that, well, you know, our harbor master was hurt, or we didn't have the manpower, or we didn't have the budget, doesn't absolve the city of liability should someone get hurt.
I've got a question, did our insurance company dictate that a voter, while tied up at the dock, cannot use the stove that's actually with the vessel? So, if I buy, if I have a boat and I have a built-in stove, did the insurance company say that they can't use it? Because I've never heard of anything like that, because that would have been nice if that came from the insurance company, because the way it's roided in here, it's like it was just decided not to allow people to use their cook stoves inside, inside my boat. Like, I know you probably have a cook stove, you've got a cook stove that comes with the boat, that's safety rated with the boat, and now you're not allowing it. How are you gonna inform transients coming from Canada who come down, and they're in nice boats, they wanna cook on the boat, they wanna spend the night at the dock? In 40 years, I've never seen an issue at that facility, and I've been around, not long. I was there when that facility was dedicated in 1976 to now, and I've never seen an issue. So, if you have a, a cook stove that's actually parked of the vessel, when it's, when it's built, and it's rated with the insurance, and your insurance will insure that boat, how come we're not allowing it at that facility? That's just something that, if our insurance company dictated it, then I think you should have included it so that people know, because the way I read this is kind of like a strong arm thing, there will be no more cooking.
That's, that's totally fair, and you can, you know, change the language to soften that up a little bit. That was one of the, some of the feedback that we got from our initial voter agreement last year, is that folks were upset about not being able to barbecue or grill on their boats at the dock. Even, whether or not a grill or a barbecue, or whatever the cook stove is that comes with the boat, it may be covered by the insurance for that person's boat, but the issue that we have to look at from a municipal, a municipal standpoint is, when someone is parked at the dock, if something did go wrong with that cook stove and there was a fire, the boats that are right next to it, because of the material that these things are made of, will catch the neighbors on fire. So, although for 40 years, nothing has happened, there was some fire issues down at the dock, our own fire department responded to a fueling process that happened, things do happen...
But that was fueling, that wasn't a cook stove.
Things do happen sometimes. So, what, what we have told people is, if you're interested in cooking on your grill, it's okay to just step out and anchor away from the dock, just to protect the other voters that are there, something were to happen, we don't like to think about those things. And so, because of the feedback that we got from having that in the initial agreement, I actually forwarded that specifically onto our insurance carrier and said, hey, this is what we have, this is the language that we have in our voter agreement, are we being too strict here, is there some wiggle room? And he responded, basically saying that, no, he wouldn't change it a bit, he did some research other places, that's totally standard practice, and we think, he thinks that it's a good idea for us.
Can I project one thing, because I voted, and I have to clarify some things. Can I read it?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to read the, what comes out the resident permit. "The operation of cooking appliances on the weather deck of any vessel at city dock is prohibited, period. Cooking appliances that produce open flames are prohibited on the marine pier and floating docks, period. There is no mention in this permit that using the installed cook stove on any vessel is prohibited at city dock. However, I would like to add that this year, a transient voter did experience an explosion in the galley of his, of his vessel while using an alcohol stove. So, to say that nothing ever happens at the city pier is inaccurate statement, but there is nothing in this permit that restricts an individual from using the installed cooking appliances on any vessel, period." That's all I get for the city.
I'd like to differ, if you look at the permit, if you look at the 2009...
I just read it.
No, no, I'm looking at the, don't, don't, please don't argue with me, sir. Okay, I'm the mayor, I have a right to read, I'm reading the permit here, I'm reading the application. This is the 2019 Boat Slip Mooring Lease Agreement, and I'm reading it right here. It says, let me get back down here. "Seasonal slips in no case may, may open flame heating elements, flammable liquids, explosive gases, or other hazardous materials or equipment to use while tied up at the city dock. Operation of all non-flame UL-listed electrical cooking appliances are permissible. Operation of open flame appliances on..." Operation of open flame appliances on the weather dock, on appliances on the weather deck of any vessel is prohibited unless anchored away from the dock. Cooking appliances that produce open flames are prohibited on the main pier of floating docks. So basically, that is saying, you're not allowed to use your cook stove inside your boat.
I disagree. It's not allowed to be used on the main pier, sir. On, not on the boat, on the main pier.
I think you need to clarify it, because I interpreted it as not allowing me to use a stove inside my boat.
So I can clarify that for you now, sir. The main pier is the structure of the pier as it comes from, from the head of land out to the, across the bridge, onto the quay walls, to out to the sea, across the bridge out to that pier, that's the main pier.
Well, I think you need to clarify it.
I'm just, if we can get that in.
Yeah, you need to clarify.
Is it on the, on the, on the weather deck of the vessel?
Sit in the cabin.
Is, is that, that's more dangerous than having a dedicated area for you on your boat. That it's not an open flame, it's enclosed and designed for.
I just think that needs to be clarified, and I think, including maybe wording from the insurance or something to clarify it, because that's what I think the underlying issue is with everybody, is the lack of clarification on a lot of this stuff. And my take from my visits and talking with people down there, is I really think customer service needs to improve. I learned that 40-some-odd years ago when I worked at King's Department Store in high school. The first thing the manager taught us, customer service, customer service, the customers are always right, even if they may not be right. You've got to, you get a lot further with honey vinegar. And what I'm seeing in my observations is a lot of vinegar. I'm not seeing the honey aspect. And these people are paying customers, and, you know, I know there's two sides to every story, but from what I'm hearing, it really truly is a customer service issue, it's a lack of clarification on things. And I really want us to get a refund on some of that raking, I really do, because we didn't get that contract fulfilled. It's like anything, it's like if you were contracted building a house and.
It's kinda late now.
No, I know, but I wish.
I actually don't know if we've received the invoice for that yet. We'll have to look into that.
So if you, yeah, because I really do think we need, because if it was that bad, I mean, I've been down there a few times and.
I mean, if you have a map and you can identify areas that weren't done?
Yeah, I know what areas are, are.
So you can show that to them, you have something physical that says, you didn't do this.
Yeah, there's a response to every request for that.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
When I, I've looked at this, you would be amazed how much time I try reading all this and coordinating the two together. So, so the biggest problem I have is that, it seems to me you've melded the two documents into, into one concept, and there's no cross-reference in the two documents and the two ordinances. And I think if you're gonna meld them, there should be a cross-reference from one to the other. And when I went through this, I still don't know if I got a handle on the dates. You know, I was struggling with the dates and cross-referencing. I think we do have to get a handle on the dates, because I don't think, I'm probably not the only person who didn't understand how they were working. And I think people have to understand that the dock document is about cars parking, putting a boat in, very little about the slips. I don't know if they really said anything about the slips, you know? So the only document we have with rules and regulations is the mooring document. And I can understand why you're defaulting to that, because you need something. And I think, I really think you've done the best you can with this. There's a few things in here that, like him, some of the things that kinda like worked me a little bit, I think they were a little overreaching, but I think that can be worked out.
And welcome the opportunity.
I personally think that we should give them a little more time and, and do our research, and, and fix these things up and make sure there's a cross-reference between the two. Or even at this point, because the meat of everything is in the mooring, maybe it should just be one.
Yeah.
Then, then everything's clear, we're not looking at two separate documents.
But the, but the cross-referencing, I think is key, because that's where the confusion came in between, because you tried to have mooring and dock, and I think that's where the confusion came in there, and I think.
But, but even the rules that come in, crossed from the, the new rules, are coming in on those ordinances. So how do we know where to, where to look?
If you're referencing mooring field rules and applying those to the dock, but then saying the dock, it doesn't apply, that's, that's where my questions have come from. It's a selective interpretation, as, as you, as you clearly say, I mean, for me, you're saying, you see a clear selective interpretation, but I mean, and we in return see a selective interpretation and application as a customer. So what we're looking for is some clarification and direction, and how do we move forward on this?
I have a question also, since I raised it before, for Jess and maybe the manager or anyone in there. What was the logic behind renting someone's slip out? So if I'm gone for a weekend, renting my slip out that I paid for, or my mooring, I just think that to me is double dipping, you know? And then I basically, I just, I guess, I guess I have an issue with that, because I've paid for that spot for the season, and then you're taking it upon you to rent it out, and what happens if I come back early, or like a mooring? Or, or say 45 days and it could be abandoned? I have, I'm not a sailboat, they don't tend, I could pick up a powerboat, but powerboats sometimes have major engine problems, and they gotta go out for 45 days to be fixed. How do you solve those type of issues? Because what determines if it's abandoned? And, and so those are some of the questions I had when I saw some of this too, is, I just think it's double dipping if you're renting my slip out that I've paid for on my mooring.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
We, we, I discussed this with Heidi too, the yacht club president, Commodore?
Commodore, I guess.
She actually had mentioned that too, and I said, so think about it this way, so all of these slips, one of the things that's challenging for us is when a boater, especially ones that have been there for many, many years in the same slip, they, they have a sense of ownership over that spot. It's almost like when you're in your classroom and you have your seat that you always sit in in class, and someone else sits in your seat. The bottom line is, those seats are really for everyone to use, and one of the mandates for the ordinance, and what we think in Parks and Recreation is that we're supposed to be encouraging public use of these facilities. So say we have a seasonal slipholder whose boat is gonna be out of the slip for a few days even, and they've, with their, their permission, if they hopefully told us that they're gonna be out of there, we get something like the regatta that comes down, and suddenly we're slammed with 25 boats. There's a prime slip spot open on the dock, and we feel like we should be able to park a boat there if we know that the slipholder's not gonna be there, because we want, you know, to arrange our marina in a logical way.
Wait, 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 please, okay, just wait a minute, let me, let me just say something. But you just said ordinance, the ordinance doesn't cover the dock. See, there's the confusion again. The ordinance is for the moorings, it's not for the dock. You just reference the ordinance, and I just, I just have an issue with that, I really do. I paid for the mooring tackle, okay? I paid for, I used to have, I'm gonna use some of my history, because I used to have a boat. I'm gonna get into camping instead of boating, but, it's easier. But I paid for the mooring tackle to go down, okay? It's my tackle, I had to pay for it. I'm paying the city rental for that spot in the lake, which technically is public water. And you're gonna let someone use my tackle that I paid for? And I guess I got an issue with that too, because what happens if the boat damages that tackle? What happens if they don't, you know? I'm just using all these cases, because that's how I interpret, you know, I, I paid for something.
You, you said something, if, if you knew they were leaving, would this be coordinated with the people?
We put, we put a request in that if, if folks are planning to leave, that they let the harbor master know. If someone's planning on being out for 45 days or more, and those, I believe, I'd have to double check, but I believe that those things were taken directly from Burlington Spa, just something that we've made up. We've asked that they let the harbor master know, so that we don't think that it's just been abandoned. There has been cases in the past where people just don't come back, and that, that is misrevenue. So we have all these things that we need to, dock is very costly to replace and to repair, so.
But it's not misrevenue if they've paid for the year.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. So the other bit is this, the mooring piece, we just talked about splitting the two in half to make it, so let, let me just recap by saying, I know nothing about boating, and I only know what I know because I have been, been kinda pushed into this and tried to figure it out along the way. So as we're going along, something like that, like you think you're right, saying, because the tackle belongs to them, until we have city-owned tackle, you're right, we should, we wouldn't be putting people on, you know, somebody else's mooring. So that's an area of the contract that needs to be divided up. Those are the things that we need to know. We can't be expected to read the minds of everyone, but I think that's a very valid point. The slip, the slip thing though, I think is valid, if, you know, you, if anyone was there for the regatta, they understand the number of boats that come in, and trying to place those boats around the dock in a safe way where people can still navigate is a challenge. So if there's a space that's open, we'd like to put somebody there.
But there was.
Just a second, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta keep some water here. I gotta go to this little lady right here. I wanna hear from the people who actually have boats and slips.
So I just wanna say that we paid for a mooring, I believe it was like $800 or something. I've been going through the lending since I'm 16 years old. I'm 50. If I decide to go to my dock, parce que j'aime mes docks, and I feel like going to my dock for 20 days and leave my boat there, meanwhile, I paid my mooring, I don't want to tell the harbor master that I'm gonna be leaving and going to my other country for 20 days. I'm appalled by that. I don't tell my husband that, can I leave for a week?
It's none of your business.
And, and that's where it's, it's really appalling. Our, 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 the bottom there, what is that called? The, the cement?
The mushroom.
The mushroom, it's $150. You will put a boat there and it could just go.
And we paid for that.
And we paid for that. And you've decided in the contract, it's there somewhere, saying, at the discretion of the harbor master, I believe I read it over and over, that's unfair.
We have a right, so we're gonna execute.
So I don't believe the new boater agreement has that in there. The piece that they're referring to that had that was a letter that was sent out with our mooring certificates in March. So totally room to revisit that. Again, that was something that we pulled from another marina. All we need to know is this kind of feedback for us to make adjustments.
Ken, we'll go back to junior act, Ken.
When, I go back to some of the statements that I made earlier on. When we're talking about these dates of being out of a slip, harbor master permission, 45 days, three days, June 15th, all of these dates were imposed after we signed our 2018 leases. Those came about after the fact. That's when I started asking questions about under what authority can you change a lease after signature? And I've never received an answer. For 2019, the new leases don't have all of that restrictive. The new leases simply say, if, if there is a temporary vacancy with no definition of temporary vacancy, the city can use a customer's slip that they've paid for for the year, or a private mooring to the city's benefit.
So what the boater agreement says.
Okay, and then I might go to Mr. Schnett and he'll explain this.
There's one sentence in here under the slip and mooring, that says, slip and mooring certificates are not transferable by any fashion. Towards the end of that paragraph, it says, the city reserves the right to use seasonal accommodations during temporary vacancies by the leaseholder, period. That's, that's the sentence that is in the boater agreement for 2019.
The leaseholder, yes.
So it does not, does not clarify that it's for dock or, or moorings. It's vague, so it could be interpreted for both until we clarify that.
Go ahead, and then I'll go over here.
Mr. Rebe, my law education tells me that a lease is a legal binding contract, and it cannot be changed unlawfully after you have signed it. Once it's been signed, it's a binding agreement between both parties, it cannot be signed after unless both parties are agreeable to that, and it's just not done. So to answer your question, it cannot be done, not.
For 2018, yes.
Anytime.
So now my, and I, I'm aware of that from my own experience with dealing with leases for rental properties and things of that nature. But I could, now I come to my question for 2000, that I asked earlier. For 2019, we're being presented with a lease that is being used both ways to the city's advantage, and we're asking for it in the opposite direction, saying, you know, this is all being confused and run together. It's being run together to the city's advantage, and we're not allowed to say, hey, wait a minute. What is the control being applied to the city, to the slips? What is the control being applied to the moorings, slips, or the leases? And do we have any say in this? And are we going to be forced to sign these without due process of the city ordinance being applied?
To me, the more I hear it needs to be delayed, you know, you need to delay that October 9 date until we can get some real clarification on everything.
Which I do if I'm moved.
Okay, I had a hand over here from a slipholder.
I have a link talking about the rental of moorings. I believe that they're gonna put that in there, they're gonna have to have the commission first, which we can bring it to the council to amend. And I don't believe there's anywhere in ordinance 114 that says they can lease it.
There isn't anything in, in the mooring ordinance that that was in error and needs to be clarified.
Another thing, one of the problems with the dock, one of the problems is the arrogance and the aggressive behavior towards women, which you just seen on Mercy a little while ago. And I know one woman specifically brought to tears down there over it, and she won't say anything, because she's worried about retribution. This woman can explain quite well, please.
Okay. But, I've been keeping it for, for people who.
But there seems to be common sense, like you said, if you rent a mooring, whether you go a day, a week, or a month, that's your mooring. It doesn't give anybody else a right to go in, because then it comes back to what you said on the insurance thing. If the city rents that mooring and you don't know about it, and somebody goes in there with a boat, and something happens, if there's a fire or damage done, who's gonna be liable for it? You, because you paid for the mooring originally, or the guy that's in there? If you paid for it all year, it's yours, nobody else's.
Mr. Johnson, did you have something?
Oh, I was gonna say, to, to just comment about changing the thing in the, in the, in the moorings. The moorings are different from the dock. They can't change anything in the moorings without coming to the commission and the council. They can't do that. Now, the dock is a dock ordinance. I mean, that's not in the jurisdiction of the harbor commission. That's in the jurisdiction of the city council.
The city council. Yes. This spring issued the stickers for the moorings.
Yes, sir.
We have C4. C4, what's that mean to you?
C4.
That's my mooring, sir. Okay, say if I went out, if you rented that mooring out, if I came back in, that gives me the right to pop into somebody's slip.
We, we just clarified that the city is not gonna be engaging in that activity, and that was in error on form, and that, that wording is gonna be removed. There's, there's no, there's no initiative to change the ordinance to include the city's ability to rent an unoccupied mooring, none.
Yes. If, I'm not a mooring owner or leasers, but if I did have a mooring and a friend of mine needed to use it or wanted to use it while I wasn't there, I, I should be able to lend my mooring out with permission to a friend. According to, I don't know about this year's.
No, the ordinance addresses it.
The ordinance. Oh, again?
Yes, the ordinance says that a mooring owner, certificate holder, can have a guest for no more than five days at a time. And the boat has to meet the same requirements, and cannot exceed the capability of the facility, and calls out very clearly. and calls out very clearly how that can be done.
Because there's a lot of issues.
Because I can remember that was quite a discussion when the ordinance was created because I'm old. I helped work on this ordinance when we first went to mooring management, myself, the former rec director way back, Mr. Johnson, uh, the city manager at the time. So I'm quite familiar with it. And yeah, that, the whole discussion on five days, they didn't want to have any days and we got five days in there, which made sense.
Because as a yacht pilot, we help out the people from the east side, um, that their docks don't go in until the twenty-fourth. So they don't have any place to keep their boat.
Another question I had was in this year's lease, it says there's no transfer of boats between slips or moorings. You can interpret that to say that we want to make sure that people just start switching around my boat with his, in, my boat to his slip and vice versa. But does it also mean that, uh, the person who has a slip and a mooring can't transfer their boat between their slip and their mooring? Or is this meant to preclude people from having both? Meaning slip owner, holder can't have a mooring? That needs to be clarified.
See, my interpretation way back was that if you had a slip, but you also had a mooring, you at least had to use the mooring one night.
Yes.
According to the ordinance.
Yes.
So I can tell you, when I had both for one season, I would go out for a weekend on the mooring. Just to, because the ordinance clearly states that you've got to at least use, if you happen to have both, like I know somebody had both. And the ordinance clearly states, one, one night I.
One night.
And so you want to make sure that you used it one night to keep both. Because that's when they, they were worried, they were worried, when we wrote the ordinance way back, um, they were worried that people would all of a sudden rent all these moorings as a way to sublease. That's why we don't have sublease. We were trying to think of all the.
Contingencies.
Contingencies. And that's where that came up, where you had to, if you had both, you had to use at least one night. Because at the time, they thought, well, the mooring field will get filled up full and there'll be a waiting list. Well, we planned enough mooring fields, I don't think we'll ever see a waiting list with all the future expansion that we planned for at the time with the state. So I think that is covered there.
I think what my question was is asking for clarification of that term in this 2019 lease.
Okay.
It says there's no transferring. Does that mean you can't transfer your boat from your slip to your mooring? That needs clarification.
So if you paid for these.
If I have a mooring permit and certificate and I have a slip and I keep my, uh, it says I have, I have to put my boat on my mooring to keep that valid, as in the ordinance. But my question is, does this, this rule can be interpreted that I can't put my boat on my mooring? It says no transfer. So, I mean, I can understand the desire of the city, if we're at full capacity on a mooring field, not to have people tying up potential for other boaters. But I think that's something that needs clarification.
I think the transfer in that context means to transfer your mooring to another owner.
Okay, in the, in the city ordinance, it very clearly defines that aspect. That you can't, I, if I transfer, if I sell my boat, or if I take my boat out or relinquish my mooring, it very clearly defines that. And it very clearly says, I can't take my boat, I can't sublet and all those things, and I can't put my boat on your mooring. I mean, I can't have my mooring and Paul can't have his mooring and we can't swap our boats back and forth. That I understand. That makes perfect sense. But the question is, is, does this, what's the intent here? Are we trying to preclude both?
Well, I, I haven't had a boat down there in fifteen years. I always say, if I pay for a mooring and pay for a slip, I'll use it any one I want.
It actually says in the agreement that leaseholders should be the primary users of the vessel, the name on the slip or mooring certificate matching the name on the boat owner's registration, so as long as.
So then we just simply strike that term for the lease?
This is in the lease, that's right.
Okay, listen, then listen to this rental, them slips if they're vacant for five or ten days, whatever it is. Does that go for the, the slips at the dock, if you're out for five days, you can't let somebody use your slip? I mean, the city, the way it's written, the city can rent that out if you're gone, right? You let a friend do it and put his boat in there?
That's wrong.
See, this is where the clarification comes in. That needs to be clarified because if that's the case, if you're gone for ten days, you can't let somebody know with a boat, use your slip, but the city can rent it out to somebody?
Yeah.
I mean, there needs to be some clarification on what your boat should do.
If you do a mooring, it's one, if I have a friend from using it, and one that wants to come up to our end and use up my slip and I can use his slip, we should be able to do that.
Right.
There should be a process by which we should be able to do that.
Tell the harbor master, so and so is coming up to use my slip, Paul will be gone during that time.
And just a thought.
Yeah, no, it's, it comes down to the clarification again, Jess.
Uh, as far as sharing slip spots and things like that, one of the big challenges for us is in understanding who's on our dock at all times. Similar to the camp sites over at Proudly Beach. If someone's got a seasonal site over at Proudly Beach, we don't allow them to let their friends come in for a week and use the space. We like to know, we want people to register, we want to make sure that they're fitting, their boat fits in where it is. We also, um, it's a pretty large camp, one is to open if you start allowing people to have their friends come over and stay. If we wanted to come up with a process for that, uh, it would be a little bit of a challenge. Perhaps it could be done, uh, but it's not something that's a normal routine even over at Proudly Beach where we also have that same seasonal situation.
Do the, do you rent out campsites? Like I paid for a seasonal campsite, so the city has a right to rent that out if I happen to go away for a couple of weeks?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, I'd have to check.
Because you can't have it at one and not the other. I think it needs to be eliminated.
I think if boats wanted to register, you know, come over and register with us, that's the important part. So we want to know who's at our dock, make sure that they have insurance, they have liability insurance on their boats and things like that and that they're fitting into the slip. So I'll just put that in there.
And then we'll have just one more and then Mr. Shinet actually had a motion, did you have one? Okay, we'll go with you before he goes. Okay, who goes?
So I just want to say, in this spirit of lack men for Magog, there is a Canadian side and an American side. And I really do not see a problem with Jay, for example, having a friend coming from Canada, going in his slip and him going to Magog in the slip. I have a boathouse also, we have a boathouse also in Canada. And I wouldn't have any trouble saying, my brother would be taking his boat and going on our mooring that we pay. Just that said, in the spirit of the French and the English, unlike men from Magog and the Abenakis.
Okay. Did you have something?
I guess, uh, one of, I'm all for like some type of postformant so that we can do a little study and stuff. But there's got to be some process and, um, I, I think we need some input as to, if we push the data, how it's gonna affect them because, you know, they, they still want to know who's gonna be there. So if there's some process where they can determine, yes, I'm gonna be there, but I want to see clarification on the, uh, you know, so you know who's coming. I, you know, I, I can't see you sitting there for a month and not knowing that people are gonna sign up.
True, the ordinance, if, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, I've been a boater in other areas for many, many, many years down in Mass. I, in the town that I lived in, having waterfront property, suddenly they changed the whole mooring regulation field and I couldn't keep a boat in front of my house without applying for it. And like one day I get up and there's somebody else on a mooring in front of my house and I couldn't go with a mooring in front of my house, where I had been for thirty years. The way that the process is handled there as a suggestion, I'm not saying this is gospel, is that there was a waitlist. You had to spend, you had to pay a non-refundable deposit to go on the waitlist. One, it gave, you had some skin in the game because it wasn't ten bucks. Two, the amount of money that you spent on that deposit covered the clerical time of maintaining your spot on the mooring list. Every year I had to, I was requested to restate my intentions for my spot on the mooring list. It was simply an email or a letter and all I had to do was say, yes, I still wish to continue. I didn't have to pay another deposit, I was still there. The mooring list was kept current, it was kept fresh. I had until, uh, the date was, it was kind of late in my opinion, but we had up until May first to renew for the coming season. There was, and that meant if, uh, if I didn't renew on May first, then somebody else could get my spot. But I was, that one, I always felt was awful late in the season. I think that what is contained in the ordinance of renewals sent out in January with payment due by the end of February leaves more than enough time to deal with a waiting list and people who are interested in the coming season. It gives the people who would be coming in either in a slip, it doesn't take a lot of preparation for the boat owner, but if it's a mooring, it gives them time to get their materials together that are required for, to create the mooring. The, the mushroom or the chain, or the block or the chain, the buoys, the floats, all of these types of things and to make arrangements for it to be placed. So I would come back to, I, personally, I don't see why there wouldn't be an issue with January renewal and February payment date. However, I wouldn't object to, I'd gladly pay my deposit now, but I don't want to sign a lease until there's a fair and equitable lease print put forward that the public has some input on.
So, Mr. Shinet, you had, you wanted to make a motion regarding this?
Sure. You've just answered one of my questions. So apparently the January and February dates are fine with you?
Yes, sir.
So what I would move is that we have the commission members, some slip and mooring owners, and even the council be brought in through emails or whatever. And I would like to have a list of your concerns and we can sit down somewhere, meet. It can be some of the members of the council invited or one or two, it's up to you folks.
Can't be more than, more than two?
Anything more than two has to be warned as a public meeting. But I would like to take the next three months, well, the next two months especially, to sit down and hash out the issues and try to resolve them. And then on the meetings of December third and seventeenth, bring that to the public and see what they feel. It could be done before that, if we have everything resolved before then, it could be done in November meetings. But certainly in the December third and seventeenth meetings, which is when we should be meeting, have that brought out into the public for discussion and, you know, possible vote. But yes, and you would not have to make your payment for your lease until January or, or February. The October deadline is, I would say that would, would be out the window at this point, as far as I'm concerned.
So is that kind of a motion?
Yes, if, if you can follow that.
Mr. Johnson wrote very quickly, did you get all that?
You'll have to use the tape.
Basically, your motion basically.
Is to erase the October ninth deadline of having to make a payment. We're gonna move that to February with notification to all the slip owners and mooring owners in January as normal. And then from now until December third, we get together for through emails, resolve all the issues and then use the December third and seventeenth meetings as public meetings for everyone to, to discuss it in an open session.
So that's a motion.
I don't know if I got enough time to listen to that.
Okay, we have a motion.
I hope the tape spelled it out for you.
Okay, and if not, I can put it in writing and give it to you.
Do we have a.
I jot it down for you, second.
Well, let's get a second first, let's get a second first.
Well, you may not want a second.
Oh, okay, that's right.
You have the commission and the slip and mooring owners and some people from the council. You're gonna meet to figure out the lease for the next two months before December third, okay? Then you're gonna bring it to the public, get their input and have a hearing on it. Basically, you're deleting the October deadline.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, wait a minute, we, we have a motion and now we have a second. Discussion for council members first before I open up to the floor, because there's some hands up there. Anybody on the council have any questions on what Mr. Shinet is proposing? Okay, there was a hand up over here.
I think under the ordinance one fourteen with the moorings, deposit still hasn't been made until, or per state. I know, you know, this would not affect.
This can only affect. Right, but I believe this can only affect, this can only affect the slip holders. Because the mooring, the mooring one, uh, ordinance one fourteen is an ordinance and we can't, I mean, that's law. We can't change, go against that ordinance, but.
I don't have a copy here in front of me, but.
Yeah, but that would, this.
Doesn't specifically state that in the ordinance?
Um, one fourteen?
That would be a, that would be a one sixteen, that's the mooring.
Oh, one sixteen, I thought one fourteen. One fourteen is mooring.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, one sixteen is.
Anyway, I'm just going from memory, I don't know.
I think it said that the ordinance had to be done based on the, the city charter, section twenty-three.
Well, we do have a motion, um, you had, did you, did I call on you? Okay, then Jess had her hand.
Uh, so just to clarify, the changes, changes to the boater agreement, we put together from the harbor commission, the city council and the boaters, nothing from the Parks and Rec director or the harbor master at this point involved in that process?
Are they normally involved in that process?
Well, we, we created the boater agreement.
If they are, then please include them.
Okay. That would make me feel good.
So I don't want to eliminate anybody that is normally in that process.
No, but I think you're right, the recreation, harbor master, the slip holders or mooring holders, both, um, member from the harbor commission.
The octopus.
That's one of the same.
Yeah, the octopus is same. Well, they're the same. And a representative from the council. I think that's pretty clear.
Council member could come as a chair.
Or liaison.
Or liaison or whatever, but, um, okay, so we have that motion. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. So we need to form a, a group of people, which can be done within, within like a week or two.
And I would leave that up to Mr. Eby and Jess to get together and bring, bring some people in that you want to bring in. If you decide to set a date, email the council and hopefully we can send a person to sit in just to.
Work for you?
Okay. Shall we select a rep from the council or do you want to wait and?
It's a few folks.
We could select a rep.
I know.
He's a master, he's a master boater, he's got a card that looks like a, uh.
I, I was certified as a veteran marine for inland waterways in the Great Lakes with towing certification. Haven't renewed it in a few years. Doesn't matter your. Go on.
My only experience is I helped work on the original one.
I, I do have some questions, you know, especially about the, the buoys and stuff. Because when I ran the state police auxiliary unit, I was informed the only coast guard approved buoy or marker on the lake was the lighthouse. Everything else, unless it was put in by the coast guard, was not.
No, they changed, yeah, they changed that. Because there's a permit that the club does every year for the coast guard.
We, we do have the documentation.
Yeah, they changed, the coast guard changed it because they actually would like to get rid of the lighthouse too. They wanted a sailing club to take over that lighthouse. But that was the year before they discovered all the batteries that they had dumped in the water. That was two years ago. But, um, basically the coast guard has, is an agreement that these are official buoys. The, yeah, the club throws out paperwork every year now, right? And they're official buoys sanctioned by the coast guard, but put in by the private. But once they're in the water, the coast guard takes responsibility.
And the coast guard checks to see the coordinates and.
Yeah, because they actually put them on a map, they contacted me to see if they were still. still put in. This was a few years ago, if we were still putting them in because they were going to actually delete them from all the navigation maps. So they count those as official buoys on their maps.
The yacht club bought and paid for the buoys and all the upgrades for the LED lights and the proper markers and all the paperwork.
And it'll be on the chart of the marine dock?
Yes.
They are now.
Yeah, like the printed maps that had come out. And actually, there's additional buoys. The club in the last couple of years put out three or four additional buoys.
We have seven buoys out there.
Seven buoys now. Used to be only three, but now it's seven. Now they're lighted buoys, which they didn't used to be.
There's only two that are unlit. That's the sandbar by Grounds. And there's another rock.
They've been put out for at least 25, 30 years, these buoys that have been put out, not by the coast guard but by the yacht club.
We bought new ones 15 years ago.
Yeah, and they were officially sanctioned by, because I actually personally was contacted by the head of the coast guard a few years ago about it. Because they...
I just assumed that the coast guard navigation buoys are...
I know we're kind of off topic, but the state police, speaking of buoys, no longer put out the five mile an hour markers. They wanted the club or the city to take it over.
And that's what I noticed in the ordinance, and that 15 mile an hour speed limit, but they had buoys saying it's a no wake zone of five miles.
There was four markers across the mooring field in front of the town dock and over towards the other side of the mooring field that were no wakes zones, five mile an hour or no wake. And the state used to put those in and they stopped doing it for whatever reason. And nobody seems to be able to accept liability for, or responsibility for putting them in. They should be put in, but...
And I forget where I was reading it, but it said that boaters will not go past the 15 miles an hour. I'm like, well, there was buoys that say no wakes zone, so it does...
They haven't been in for almost four years now.
Mr. Shennett and Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Charbonneau is willing, I would certainly nominate him to be the liaison on that committee.
I'd like to.
Is that a motion? Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Charbonneau, you're on committee. Very good. Well, thank you for coming. This was a good discussion this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone for coming. Very good discussion. I don't think we need the next one. We got the next steps, so I don't think we need the executive session. All right, moving on. Mr. Johnson, new business. Mr. Charbonneau. Ms. Ebbe, any new business?
Uh, slightly. I'm not actually sure if it should be more old. It's dealing with a line item in the budget status report, so I can wait and find it until we get to old.
Okay. The new business I have is, I realize my email, I guess that I sent to everybody didn't work, according to Mr. Shennett, because I sent a couple of emails. Yeah, see, no one got it. I had, the chair of the planning commission wanted, which we can discuss now, the council's opinion on changing the zoning to allow for a senior housing assisted living. And my information from reading the minutes is they didn't really want to proceed unless they thought the council would go along with it. I don't know if you read the planning commission minutes, it's where Lakemont, there's a proposed, a lady has proposed a assisted living senior housing that we brought up at the last planning commission meeting. And it's going to require a zoning change for that area. Because it goes, it's zoned, light industrial, right to residential. And you'd have to create like an urban residential for that.
And between the industrial and...
And Lakemont.
Which I believe is a allowable buffer, but I would also want to make sure that it isn't lawful use.
Right, but the planning commission didn't even want to proceed unless they polled the council. That's the way I read the minutes.
As long as you're not spaziling, which you can't do.
Right.
If they've got one lot in mind.
They have two lots in mind. It's two, the two remaining lots down there, which personally, in my opinion, would create a good buffer from the light industrial to the, because you're never going to get, dropped my pen there. You're never going to get, I talk with my hands, I take out the my dad.
We're ignored.
Yeah. You're never going to get industrial, I think, ever built there because in the past, the owners of Lakemont or the people didn't want any type of industrial. And so I think this would make a great buffer. But they just wanted a, the thought of the council. I had sent an email and not realizing, none of you got it.
Elderly housing?
Yeah, it's assisted living elderly housing complex. And the reason why they liked that location too is the two available lots, but it's close to the hospital, the VNA is right there. And the lady who approached, I chatted with her, who's behind it, eventually if it does get built and all that, would work with RCT to create a bus route down through there too. So just wanted to pass that by, pass that by the council.
I would certainly be in favor of it, once I would be on the zoning regs.
The zoning regs, okay.
Absolutely. There might be a conditional use already.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, they just wanted to, because they thought that they would have to, Charlie thought they would have to change the zoning. So we could let Charlie know that the council's, you know, based upon review of the zoning, whatever, would be in favor of it. Okay. Because I just thought it'd be good economic development too for the city and we know that senior housing or assisted...
Don't give me a laugh.
Assistant living facility is something that, you know, would be a great addition. Okay.
The only problem I have is that I get punchless, you know. And it seems like all the time something comes along and we deal with one issue rather than doing all the issues that need to be taken.
Right, right.
And I don't want to complain that, you know, probably seven years ago now that I mentioned a lot of abrata and things that are really bad, but the thing as it is. And we've already done two or three mini things, you know, we changed the only along the Derby Road and stuff, and yet none of the abrata or anything ever got fixed.
None of it, okay. So we can just pass that on, along with Charlie, that the...
The council's generally in favor of that.
Yeah, not the planning commission chair though. That's what I had. Go back to you.
Thank you, thank you. So I was looking at the general ledger budget status report in the general fund and noticed in a couple of areas that there are waived event fees as listed as an expenditure. And since there's no money that changed hands, I don't see how that can go in the budget.
It's tracking all your waived fees.
What page?
It's the second page. I believe I'm accurate in saying any, anytime that you waive a fee, it comes out of the special council projects and gets moved as an expense to the area that's affected. So I think you'll notice it in police and public works and recreation. So that's, you're seeing what the motions are that you're making that's in the events policy. This is what it looks like. This is, this is it in practice. So you're seeing it, these, so any amount that you waive, and you know how much you waive at the council meetings, that's how it's coming out to plan. So you're seeing it actually.
Right, it may not be real, what you consider real money, but it's a way of tracking it. It is an accounting aspect of tracking.
Well, where we have actually approved special council fees to cover those waived fees, I can see that. But just keeping a separate list of what we've waived rather than putting it into the budget as though money has changed hands, I would be more comfortable with. But I'm not an accountant.
Well, this is a way of tracking it. It's a bookkeeping, it's a bookkeeping aspect. And I wanted to be able to track it in this budget.
It reflects accurately for each department?
Yeah.
So it gives you a baseline going forward when we come to do our next budget.
Right. And that's why I want it in there, so we could, so next year when we're working on the budget, we can go, okay, this is what this costs, this is what this costs. Because I look at every time we waive fees, we're actually taking it actually from the right department.
I disagree, but I know, I know your thinking on it and I understand, I understand.
Oh, okay. Well, we have a right to disagree.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
That's what we even do.
Yes. That's just an accounting thing that I wanted. It's my bookkeeping aspect of tracking things. That's the way I wanted that. Okay. Any other new business?
Thank you.
New business? New business, Mr. Johnson? Any new business?
I have two for old business.
I have some old business too. Mr. Johnson, old business?
To let you know, tax bills will finally be going out this week. Everybody be prepared.
Can't wait.
Can't wait. Mr. Charbonneau, any old business? Any old business? The old business I had was also something I emailed, not realizing my, my group email didn't work. I only found that out today when I asked Mr. Shennett something. And he goes, I didn't get that email. And so, do we want to have on agenda items, say within the next two meetings or whatever, a discussion about the presentation of Casella? I think there was enough information, we probably should have something, you know, warned when we talk about it. I just, because there was a lot of questions, I think, on both sides. You know, they presented, we, one side presented, they presented. I just think we need to have, because we were, we were asked by the one group to make a stand or a decision, but I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to review. You know, there's a lot of information. There's a lot of links, a lot of, you know, details. So I didn't know in a future agenda if you'd like to have it on an agenda. I emailed that to people, just curious.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a specific date in mind as to when this might take place? Surely before the end of the year?
Well, I was thinking, I'm not sure where their, their stuff stands as far as the permitting. I know it's all being reviewed.
We're still waiting for entities from the state as well.
We're not.
Well, for information.
That group isn't. I asked them. They said that they, they weren't waiting on anything because I asked. We chatted. They claimed, they claimed they're not waiting on anything. So I don't know. That's where the confusion is. But I was thinking within like maybe the first meeting in December or something like that. Is that too far out?
No, not sure as I was...
One question that I have is, aside from the issue of how much Lich A that we're taking, is there anything else that the council has any decision-making power on?
The only thing is the Lich A, because we didn't get party status to Iraq 250.
So it would be more of a public input kind of meeting to hear what?
Be kind of like public input, but it also, I really want to see the results from the state regarding the Lich A, the wet test and the Lich A. Because I would hate to see us start taking more and then have an issue develop. So I'm really anxious to see those results from the state, or from, is it the state or independent? Is it independent testing or the state?
I think it's spearheaded by the state.
They had us do the testing and so we sent samples to the state? I was a little confused there.
That's a detailed question that I'm not conflicting. That's our...
Maybe you could ask Pedro if the samples, because that was where I was a little confused. Because I know they asked us to do it. But I was just looking to see if we wanted to have another discussion on it, just, because it was so much presented from both sides and there was a lot of homework. And so that's all I had under old business.
From what I understood, there were a lot of questions that were asked at the gateway meeting of these different groups, and they were going to get information back. So I was kind of wondering if maybe we should have that information as well. Now, have they gotten all that information back? I don't know.
I don't know. We can check on that aspect.
But yes, I think, yes, we should revisit it and December will be fine as long as it doesn't interfere with Mr. Charbonneau's work.
I see. But it would be nice to hear from Pedro as well, to get his input on the Lich A's going to the wastewater plant.
Because I know my big thing is the heavy metals and also that, the new thing, the PFOA, PF whatever they call it, the TAPWAN stuff there, you know. So, okay, that was old business. Then the only other old business was something I emailed everyone to. The, there was good news as far as the local Thai restaurant business. Their second chef got approved today in Thailand for their E2 visa. So the second chef, because they've been running shorthanded, the second chef is, he and his wife were on their way back within a few days.
Excellent.
So we can thank Senator Leahy, the governor was involved, I wrote a letter and all that. So that was good news. I got an email on that. So I just wanted to report that out publicly. And that's all I have. I'll keep quiet now. Mr. Shennett, anything? Mr. Ross?
No.
Laura?
Just to remind folks, the October 6th Household Hazardous Waste Event is coming up Saturday. And I'd like to ask people to save the date of Monday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at the North Country Career Center, where we intend to present the Waterfront and Downtown Master Plan. So that's a nice location to do it. We're going to do it in collaboration with the Newport City Downtown Organization. We're going to be inviting cross gamut of our community, including the three Newport committees. And we'll talk about capacity of expectations of the plan, how the downtown organization is going to assist the city in meeting some of the goals, and introduce resources. So it should be a very nice meeting, two hours. We don't want to take up too much time. It'll be lightly catered. And we're looking forward to it.
Very good.
Please mark that date down. And we'll put more out in the coming weeks.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, then. The next city council meeting will be Monday, October 15th at 6:30 PM. And now we need a motion to adjourn at 8:38. Motion made. Is there a second? And all those in discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.